If he wants to do that, if they have a short answer and want to go to the next one, that's fine. Michelle Mathis, who I like to refer to as the voice of the Yankel County, she's no longer employed with the county, but her voice is still on quite a few switchboard functions when you do call the county. So, thank you, Michelle, for hosting our third forum. Thank you, Michelle Mathis. Can we have some applause?
Yes.
It looks like we have a fair amount of questions. There are cards up your tables, pens. If anything occurs to you while the forum is going, please feel free to write those questions and put them in the basket, and she will listen to them, usually on a topic. I will be the timekeeper. As it is closing in on seven o'clock, I'd say let's go for lively thirty, thirty-five minutes, take a quick bathroom break, and we do have the facility until eight-thirty tonight. So, we've no further ado, I'm going to turn over to the moderator, who's Mathis. And everybody, thanks for coming. Kennedy Williams, would you like to go first?
Sure.
Name three things that distinguish you from your opponents.
The three things that distinguish me from my opponents really are my collaborative style of leadership. Oh, you need a mic?
Yeah. Can we just bring it closer? Is that how we're?
Those are not PA mics.
Okay.
This is the only mic.
Look at that. Thank you for saying something.
You'll probably just have to pass that around.
We can do it. Excellent.
So, the three things that distinguish me from my... Can you repeat it one more time? Say three.
Are we at one o'clock?
Name three things that distinguish you from your opponents.
Okay. So, the three things that distinguish me from my opponents are my collaborative style of leadership, my level of understanding and experience with mediation and conflict resolution, and the fact that I am an educator, and I care about looking at things through the education lens, and I see myself as a teacher first in everything I do.
You've got about a minute and fifteen seconds if you want to do it for us.
Sure.
We'll share your time. I think I'll stand if that's okay. I think the first thing is that I'm a longtime resident here in Yankel County. I've spent the majority of my life here. I've seen a change from, you know, a lot more farmland and fields that I used to play in as a kid, and I brought this up in the last forum, but even driving by the great house in Dundee, to housing that's just sprawled out, the schools have increased exponentially. And so, being here, I've seen a lot of change in a lot of the things that have kind of, some that are positive changes and some not so positive. The second part is I have an inside knowledge, working for the county right now and negotiating contracts, being able to understand at least as far as that part of the county operations and some of where the money's being spent or misspent. Having that detailed information because of that bargaining process is probably the second thing. And the third thing for me, I think it is that collaborative approach, kind of like she said, we share that in common. Working, I work with the majority of the agencies in the county, majority of like the school districts, things like that, having an understanding of what those needs are from our own county operations to the needs in each community, because as we're looking for resources for families or working with the schools and seeing those needs there, for me, that gives me kind of an inside track on listening to those things, because I'm constantly looking for resources for families. What can we do to improve their living situation, but also how can we help them to be more independent as well? So, I'd say that would be the three things that distinguish me. So, what do you think? I'm handling a microphone and I have a cold. I don't want it to get into David.
I don't want to get sick.
And I don't want to get to Josh. Is there...
No, it's okay.
I'm looking at Gary like he knows. Gary!
He should have your own mic.
That's okay.
I have hand sanitizer.
That sounds great. Hand sanitizer.
We'll be fine.
Well, David and I, we don't want to pass. Okay, so, I'm Casey. Brief bio, since I have a couple of minutes here, I was born and raised in Lincoln City, at the beach. I'm a fifth-generation Oregonian, and I went to school in Bellingham, Washington for my undergraduate degree, which is in biochemistry. I lived in the North Cascades, and I was a plumber in a village in the North Cascades. I was also a union plumber, plumber's assistant when I worked in college. I came back to Bellingham, excuse me, with my wife for graduate school, and I have a graduate degree in ecology, and I actually studied the watershed that I plumbed for in the North Cascades, the watershed that includes Glacier. So, the three things that distinguish me from other candidates running for position number one, which is held by Stan Kermazich, who I think is right there, no, right here, yeah, is that I'm a rural Yankel County resident, and I think it's time that we have representation from outside, more representation from outside of McMenville. It's important to have voices and influence from throughout the county. The second thing is that I'm a full-time farmer, although these days I'm also a full-time campaigner. And farmers know land use. We've been involved in major land use decisions of the county for the whole time we've farmed, and farmers also know how to manage things. But finally, farmers know how to get things done, and it's time we had somebody in the board who just is like, all right, let's get this done. We've got a plan, let's do it now, let's implement. The third thing is that I am a scientist, and it's time for us to have representation on the board from somebody who knows how to analyze data, who knows how to look at numbers, who knows how to take varying viewpoints and assess the veracity of them. So, let's get that viewpoint onto the board. And I think that might be everything I need to say for that one. What do you think? Okay. Hand sanitizer, Sarah?
Right next to you. He'll be all right. My name is David S. Wall, and one of the first things that distinguishes me from my opponents, I'm the wounded one. And this is the first day I've gotten out of bed for the entire month of April.
Can we clap for that?
Very glad to be here.
Very excited to be here.
And I thank God it could have been a lot worse, but nonetheless, I'm a new Oregonian, new-minted Oregonian, and we've been here two years, and yet it's safe for me to say that I'm a greater level of detail in the county than everybody that's running for office combined. Now, what I do, if any of you could do, all you have to do is spend a lot of time reading reports and analyzing data, because that could be a sin chemistry. I'm a retired City of San Jose employee, but anybody, everybody has an imperative duty to participate in our bureaucracy. Now, I have a different way of doing it, just like all people have different ways of doing it, but you have to do it, because you're losing, we're losing, a battle of our agricultural history in Oregon to a whole new way of life that is, in my opinion, irreversible, unsustainable, and none of you really want it. I mean, I don't believe you would want it, because you've been in Oregon long enough and I haven't. But what you're looking at is a creation of little miniature Portland's all over the place chewing up very, very valuable and irreplaceable farmland, and which will get in its place is high-density residential development, all sorts of what they call municipal service fees, which are another nightmare unto themselves if you own property, or especially if you rent, you're at the mercy of these things. And I'm also an added gardener. I make soil as a hobby. I also am a honey farmer. I just got a tractor, but it's unlikely I'll be getting up on it anytime soon. However, in a few weeks, I'll be hopefully walking like a resident. And I'm also a beekeeper, and so I enjoy keeping bees, and that's very important for our agricultural economy and for us to have food to begin with. I'm also a merchant orchardist, where I have a lot of fruit trees to get in the ground on the property that God gave me to be a stewardess. And so, that's my background. And I, you know, everybody has more things they could say, I just don't want to bore you with any more than I've already said. Thank you.
Oh.
How do you feel about the Yambellis Rails to Trails program?
Well, this is probably our hottest topic right now, it seems like. I am in support of it, from what I've seen right now. Do I think it's completely solid, though I still think there are some things, some details that need to be discussed. We talked about taxpayers' dollars and things going to it. So far, it's cost, if you divide it up among the population of Yankel County, it's costed us about $2 apiece of tax dollars. Right now, from what I'm understanding, just by looking at the contracts and the paperwork, is that it's, most of the funding is going to be coming from federal, state, and grant funds, and then a lot of the upkeep is supposed to be a relationship between the county and a volunteer group that has already been put together to be able to maintain that. Now, there are still some concerns on my end as far as the county maintaining something that big, because if you look at our depleted roads department, we, in the last five years, we went from forty-five employees down to thirteen that are managing the roads itself. So, keeping up with the trail, law enforcement, how are we going to manage that? And then just the overall cost, what is that going to be? So, so far from what I'm seeing, I am in support of it. I think it's a great way to bring people to see the county. Is it completely a hundred percent where it's not going to cause an issue for anybody? No. I still think there is time for some more discussion for that. I know that's tomorrow night, but as of right now, I am in favor of the trail. All right. So, Wayne convinced me, Wayne that's over here is involved with the, it's friends of the Yambellis Bus Center, is what you're involved in. And so, I support the trail. I've been really impressed by how this like county resident-led initiative has been issued to get as far as it has, and I think that the county needs to continue to support that. Tomorrow's hearing, which is at seven o'clock, is it room thirty-two? Okay. Room thirty-two in the courthouse will be the planning commission public testimony on farm impacts for it, and I encourage anybody who's interested to go, maybe even just to listen to find out what's happening with it. But, yeah, and the fascinating thing is that because of the, what's happening, that there's a hearing for, is that there's a zone, right, it's a text amendment to the transportation system plan. Once we have that in it, essentially, we'll be good to go. The planning director tells me that there will be no more applications involved, so this is going to be your time to hear what's going to happen before it happens. Wayne, do you...
It's not the courthouse, it's the civic center.
That's what I was wondering about, yeah. So, it's at the McMenville Civic Center, which is the Kent Taylor Civic Hall, is that it? Yeah. Okay. David?
Thank you. I am pro trails, even though I can't walk on one right now, but this project has too many questions for me. First of all, why did the railroad get the property it did in the first place? Railroads aren't inherently nice people. They just come and they take things. So, years ago, they took farmers' land, and, oh, I don't know if they got it, fine. Has anybody done any testing of the railroad property for hazardous waste? Now, railroads, and I'm not inferring, suggesting, or implying that the railroad's using these tracks intentionally or negligently discharge hazardous wastes along these rails, but it's very, very foreseeable, it's happened before in other jurisdictions, and that hasn't been addressed. So, the county is assuming a possible nightmare liability with this project. Now, funding, we noticed the grants, whenever you hear grants, shy away from them, because more times than ever, they have hidden obligations nested within the grant that far exceed the cost of the money that you give for the grant. The obligations cost you far much more money than you give. So, the actual funding structure for this project is flawed, because grant funding, federal funding, those are illusory, that can be cut off within a twinkle of an eye or a change of administration. What's real is if you go down this path, if you choose to, because as a, if one commissioner can't dictate, you're going to be assuming a lot of unknowns, specifically debt. Now, push that aside, what else is the county assuming? You're assuming an amazing amount of liabilities, because farmers that are out there, if there's criminal acts that are perpetrated on this trail, and it's foreseeable and will, because twenty-six sheriff deputies for Yankel County is an abomination in itself, and if you think the sheriffs are going to be out there, I've got some beachfront property I'll say, I'll check. And so, you have the criminal element that's going to be out there, you're going to have possible improbable encampments of people that are out there either trespassing or trying to just survive. And overall, this is an economic development program, trying to link different jurisdictions within Yankel County, and that can be a good thing, and I'm not arguing against that. But when you look at all the unknowns, especially trespass on farmers' property or properties, wherever they are, and also another phrase that you should be very accomplished with is diminution of property value. Now, this is a real property issue. You put a trail and bisects all these properties, and problems arise, and it affects the property values of these other properties. This is a liability tsunami, and I guarantee you the county will lose, and that means county taxpayers are going to lose. Now, Yankel County, as you know, is a county with very major resources, and if I'm asked, do I support this project, nonetheless, Yankel County won the lottery for the next fifty years. Otherwise, forget it, it's a bad deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If you take a look into the concept plan of the Yambellis Trail, it sits on its cover that it's in partnership with Yankel County, and that means that Yankel County has already dedicated itself to being in partnership with this project. And those that have been in this project have been dedicated for many hours and many volunteers since nineteen ninety-one. I know that it's been unfortunately a divisive tool in our local politics, and I find that concerning, because I do feel that when you have that group of people who made that kind of dedication to something like this, that shows you that there's a deep love and a care for this project. And so, the role I would play, Ms. County Commissioner, in terms of this, is to make sure that all sides are heard, but also I know in conflict, if you continue to go around with the same issue, it usually means that you haven't gone through and heard everyone completely, and I do understand that farmers have concerns and they need to be heard. But so far, I can hear anything that I think is so egregious that it cannot be dealt with, and so, I am in complete support of the trail, and I feel that it would be a really amazing thing for Yankel County, both economically and just for the benefit of the people who live here. Kennedy Coolen. What is your stance regarding commercial solar arrays signed on prime farmland?
So, for some, an update, the county commissioners, was it last week?
Yeah.
So, last week, they approved a zoning ordinance change to ban solar permits from farmland, industrial arrays, and I think that going forward from here, what we need to do is we need to, I'm talking to Emily about this a little bit, but we really, really need to make sure that conditions of approval that the county places on solar arrays, the arrays that have been approved and the arrays that are going to be approved before the ban takes effect, that the conditions of approval really, really need to preserve soil health and really need to accommodate neighbors. We have a situation here where we're banning them, but all the arrays that we get before that time are still going to be here for twenty years, and so, I really feel like now is the time to address soil compaction. Like, we talked about soil health already, but soil compaction is a really important thing, because we need to make sure that the soil is still of good quality when it goes out as solar arrays, not leaving, Ken Friday, the direct planning director, and I talked about not leaving aggregate in place, and whether we can, if aggregate needs to be brought in, that it will be taken off the site as well. So, conditions of approval, I think, are the time to really be focused on now, conservation likely conditions of approval. David?
Thank you. First, you have to ask yourself the question, why are they going for these farmland, solar array farms to begin with? Now, I don't know how many of you follow cap and trade, but you have a lot of outstate investors that are actually agents helping out other states, specifically California, for cap and trade to reduce their carbon footprint, and let's say California, by saying, hey, we have, we're creating electricity up here in Oregon. It's a, it's a very inappropriate way of how they do their financing and all the shenanigans about cap and trade, which in itself be aware of that, because the money is not locked in to do energy research or anything to do with enhancing the environment. It's usually done for housing and transportation issues. So, do, would I want to see solar farms in Yankel County? Let me put it this way, I don't want to see solar farms anywhere in Oregon on prime farmland. And this goes to the issue that Oregon's farmers are in two categories, basically, those without money and those that have. And the ones, the farmers are either sixty, like my age, sixty-three or older, and if they don't have a younger generation of farmers to come in, this is an impetus for them to try to save the farms, and I don't blame them, really, I don't. But we have to create a system, in my opinion, that was done years ago with farm banks to encourage and support the next generation of farmers to come in and get land, to be able to get equipment and carry out farming, which people like to do, and that we need them, and it is the backbone of the economy of Oregon. None of this fly-by-night stuff like intel or all these service-related jobs, these will, these will pass in time. But farming is the economic background, backbone of Oregon, and it's disappearing. Now, with reference to what would happen to the soils, sure, compaction will happen, you're going to have leachate coming off the balance, very small amounts, the compaction can be remedied, but once you go down this path of solar farms, what's the next excuse to chew up prime farmland? Now, for you people that live in Newburgh, all you have to go up here is to, from college to Benjamin, and look at all that prime farmland that is going to be prostituted for residential housing. So, I mean, it's happening right here in Newburgh, only it's not a solar farm, it's housing, and this is the same thing that's sprouting up in other jurisdictions throughout our county, and it all depends on what you as voters want. Do you want to lose the agricultural nature of our county for development regardless of solar farms or what have you? But the energy, remember, all these farms, solar farms, are basically linked to cap and trade issues, and you really have to get in and understand that cap and trade, because it sounds really good on the surface, but there's so many loopholes that it can be easily bastardized and taken advantage of, and so, I do not support solar farms.
I think I would like just to read what page sixteen, section M of the Yankel County Land Use Plan states. "The county will encourage industrial development which bases its products on renewable and indigenous raw materials." So, that tells me that this has been a, a plan of the county's is to encourage renewable material and indigenous raw materials, and I think that there is an element of solar that plays right into that, and I think honestly that we have to take a look at reducing our dependence on fossil fuels, and this is one of the ways that we can do that. I do understand that we just spoke to a gentleman, Sheridan, who is concerned that the majority of solar installations are in the Uptown, Sheridan, or La Mina, where they feel that they have not been heard, and so, I do understand that there are concerns about those who are living next to or invisible, they can see these solar installations, but I do think it's an important conversation to have, and I actually disagreed with the ban that was recent. I believe that we should have put a moratorium, and we're similar to Marion County and Combe to War Group. I felt like there's still a lot of information that's not known, and I feel like that those that come out and talk about the solar installations, primarily the companies that are soliciting farmers, it's difficult to take their information and not understand that they have a conflict of interest, right? So, we really need an independent war group to take a look at this more closely, although I, in theory, I agree with solar, and I think that commercial solar installations could be a positive thing, not necessarily a negative thing, that it comes down to the policies that we create around it, and again, the role I would play in this is to be making sure that those voices are heard and that we can come to some sort of agreement. I think that if you ask anyone, not everybody would want to have the back-to-back, the state has rules and regulations when it comes to these, and we need to be making sure in our planning, in our county and planning commission, that those rules are being upheld, and that we also are instituting policies around what's best for our county. Thank you.
K O Y C, McMenville, Newburgh.
Renewable energies are necessary. I do not think that, especially with this issue in Yankel County with the solar farms being placed on high-grade land, I don't, I don't think that that's a benefit.
being placed on high-grade land, I don't, I don't think that that's a benefit. And if you took the time to, you know, listen to some of the discussion or go to hear the people that are coming out of Portland and the surrounding areas, I kind of got patronized a little bit because I called them suits in the middle of the board commissioners meeting, that have no interest in the well-being of Yankel County. Because the first statistic that should stand out is that they only operate at 30% efficiency in this area. To me, you can go to central Oregon where there's a lot more sun and get a lot more out of it than that, central or eastern Oregon, or even in some of these commercial zone areas that don't have farmland on it. But instead, they're coming here. And there are a lot of people that have been involved in this battle that I've asked questions, some that have hired an attorney. And my question is, who's benefiting from this? Because when they, the, the solar companies are talking, they're talking about selling back to P G E. P G E has to buy back that power. And I said, so who does that benefit? And they said, well, it benefits the area. And they kind of shot themselves in the foot at that point because they said, earlier they had said, well, it'll be routed towards the, if it's needed in California, then it goes to California. If it's needed in Washington, then it'll go there. Those of you who are on the P G E grid and that pay those P G E bills know that it's not cheap, okay? That power is not a benefit, that's one line itself, that it's not benefiting our county. I drove by one of the solar farms just recently, and they had workers out there, I didn't see anybody that was any company that is connected to Yankel County that were on that site. They said they would provide jobs. Then they said they would be able to provide jobs long-term. But then the other side of it, they said, well, it's low maintenance, you really don't have to do anything with them, because once they're set up, it's just cleaning them every month and a while. They continuously say things, they even had an attorney there that said the same exact thing they did. But I can tell you with some of these people, that it's not about where they develop. They're going after some of the century farms, they're approaching some of the older people and presenting them and with flyers and letters saying that they'll sit down with them, we'll, we'll pay you $5,000 just to sit down and talk. That, that's a pretty big incentive to me. But that's also deceiving. That, that's talking to farmers that know what it takes to work hard and that amount of work. And if you can throw money at that, it's almost tempting, but it's deceiving too. Because at some point, they're going to leave. And when it's time to take care of those things, are they going to be there if they're not even local companies? So for me, it was so much deception. Not only that, our farmland is important. Growing up here and knowing what agricultural mean, the agricultural community means to Yankel County.
You can pull up the sign and bring it over.
I know the importance of that. And nobody from the outside from these bigger companies should be able to come in and do the things that they're doing and do it under deception. So I am definitely against it.
Kenneth Kula. What do you see as the most pressing issue facing Yankel County and what would you recommend to minimize the impact?
The most pressing issue affecting Yankel County is an uninformed electorate that doesn't pay attention to what's going on in our county. But without a side of that, water. Now, anybody from California would bet their home that Oregon doesn't have a water problem, but it has a significant water problem that has ancillary issues that are going to be costing a lot of people a lot of money within a very short period of time. Now, with reference to water, all of these jurisdictions have P O T Ws or privately-owned treatment works, sewage treatment plants, and they discharge into the receiving waters. That alone, because they have to watch for temperature and other nutrient issues affecting the wildlife and the streams and rivers, is going to call for more enhanced treatment and also the reduction of temperature of the effluent that's going in. Now, we all know in Oregon, Oregon owns all the water in Oregon, and I think they even made an arrangement with God that they own it before it hits the ground. But there's a loophole in the fact that these sewage treatment plants, that effluent, the state does not own that. And that's a water source that can be utilized for a variety of mechanisms. Now, since all these other jurisdictions have been sucking groundwater out for decades, they're going down to, going for service water, so your rivers. But remember, rivers, our rivers, have been polluted with a variety of different agents. The most significant of these are pharmaceuticals. And this is what we excrete in your inner feces, and it goes untreated throughout any publicly-owned treatment plant. And it gets into the water, these concentrations build up, and they affect all sorts of wildlife and whatnot. But if you're going to be compelled to drink the stuff, you're going to have to have reverse osmosis plants. And these things are very energy-dependent, very, very costly, and their byproduct, the brine, is another hazardous waste nightmare all in to itself. Now, with this water issue comes the next thing that drives the water issue is development. And that's where you have to make a decision. I'm anti-development, and there's enough people here that they don't have the infrastructure to take care of anyway. You don't need to turn Yankel County into a slum of Washington County or a suburb of Marion County, in my opinion. So then you have infrastructure issues. You have crumbling pipelines, valves that have to be replaced, and of course, the purification plants all in to themselves is a completely different matter. I can go on, I'm Ken.
Oh my gosh, I just want to listen to David all the way. He speaks in my, like, lower language.
I think that the largest problem here in our county is the same problem that all the counties in Oregon are dealing with, which is growth. And really, at the bottom line, it comes down to rapid growth. We have a lot of people moving here and at State of. So as Emily said, we are struggling with being able to provide resources to accommodate all the people that are coming here. But the truth is, is there's not, I mean, you can't stem the tide of growth, but what you can do is plan for it. And so what I would say is, as we go and see the statistics, keeping our finger on the pulse of the growth and working together to do long-range planning so that we can figure out ways to deal with these issues that are, that are coming up. More people taxes every aspect of our system and every resource that we have. So it's important, the number one thing we can do to do that is plan for it and, and do long-range planning, look out 20 years and 30 years, and ask ourselves, can our water systems withstand? What do we need to do in order to enhance those? What can we do about waste and landfill? Those, those are issues that are the, are the result of expanded growth. And I don't think, based on what I'm seeing in statistics and the data, that that's going to change anytime soon. And another issue that really has come up around that is affordable housing. So we don't even really have places for people to live in this county right now, for those that are here. And yet, it looks as though that we're going to grow another 10 to 15% in the next five years. So those are, that's what I would suggest that we do is really take a look at how we're planning for that.
Three.
Okay. I, I had the chance to talk to David, and we kind of both see things. He, he does a lot of his homework. He's there all the time with the board commissioners. And I think transparency and the budget planning are probably some of the biggest issues. There is not a lot of skill there right now. There's not long-term planning, long-term investments, and there's just way too much flexibility with that budget that they have, and they have the answer to no one at this point. And because of that, they, money gets shifted, money isn't directed into the places they are. Money is spent into areas that they feel is important to them, but not some of the higher needs of the county. Being out in the West Valley area, going out there, he just talked about, there are 26 sheriffs covering all of Yankel County. If you've driven around the whole county, not all 26 sheriffs are on duty all at the same time. Getting from one end to the other or covering the areas they are, it, it's just not feasible. There is no mindset right now that focuses on Yankel County when it comes to even the transit issue. They're focusing on the regional, how do we connect better with Tiger? How do we connect better with Hillsborough or Salem? How do we get people there? And when you ask them questions about how they're making their decisions, what statistics are you using? When you use that measurement to make the decision to focus more of your spending of your budget towards those areas, how are you making those decisions? Well, there's a, there's a bunch of ridership that goes out to Tiger. I said, but that route includes Dayton, Lafayette, Dundee, and Newburgh. And then Tiger, what is that split? So you're going to add more routes to all those outside areas? Well, yes, we need to, you know, bring employees in. What about those rural areas that don't have transportation in that can fill those jobs economically, that could benefit their local communities because they are having jobs to be able to put back into their economies? Those outside areas, a lot of the rural areas are being ignored. Amity doesn't even have a bus route yet going through it, so they're being ignored as well. So the way that they're looking at things and the way that money's being spent, they're able to do it with no accountability to, to voters or to citizens right now. There is no kind of budget except for that one that's inserted in the paper. And then two weeks later, the budget's different than what they put in the paper, but that doesn't get advertised. Last year's budget, they said, oh, we saved, we're $3 million under where we were the year before. The actual budget that came out was $3 million more, okay? You have high costs when it comes to administration costs, and David and I both, he, he goes to a lot of those meetings, so he sees that. That kind of spending, you're spending $150,000 on one position, 350,000 total when it comes to both the county administrator and the deputy administrator. No other county our size has those two positions in place. There's a lot of spending that's happening, just not where it needs to be. So when we're talking about the economic development, it's great, but there were no commissioners out there when the mill closed down out here and they were striking out here and they're talking about how that went down. They were giving tax incentives in order to keep a certain amount of employees employed. Two weeks later, they shut down that paper mill. They bought $288 million. And now they're, it's up for sale, so if any of you have $4 million laying around, you can purchase that. There are two companies right now willing to purchase that and open it up the next day. But because there is a clause in the contract that you have to sign when you purchase that, they say that you can't open it under the understanding of not operating anything close to what they do. Which means that in order, if a company wanted to come and knock that down and redo it, provide jobs, they have to spend tens of millions of dollars to get rid of all the stuff that's on that property. There's a lot of misinformation that's not shared. And David's absolutely right, we are misinformed. Until I got into that position, my time is up. Thank you. Okay, are you going to clap for me too? This feels kind of weird. Okay. Oh, thank you, thank you. So there are, I feel like there are many, many things in Yankel County that should be considered the number one challenge or issue. I really appreciated your, Chelsea's comment about growth. It's, it's one that underpins a lot of the concerns that we have going into these campaigns. But honestly, I'd love to like, you know, give something to Polly, uh, Pauline, and like, just be like, okay, here, like, mental health services, we really need access. Affordable housing, like, we really need more affordable housing. But honestly, from a position of being a farmer and a person who has a master's that where I study climate change, climate change is really the thing that we need to be aware of. I think as a county, we need to do the classic, like, admit that we have a problem, like, we do have a problem, we need to address climate change. I'm glad you liked that, thank you. We have, we need to admit that climate change is happening and will happen in the future. And then we need to look at the forecast that, so wonderfully, Oregon State University provides updated forecasts on what's going to happen for Yankel County and all other counties in the state going on into the future. They update their climate assessments to reflect that things have changed now, and they update and decide to tell us what their research has shown is going to happen in the future. But then we also need to take that information and make a plan for the future. And not just to reduce our carbon emissions, but really, we, it's actually time for us to adapt and mitigate the effects of climate change in our community. And everybody's been referencing David, so I thought I should reference David too, that water is a really big part of that. We're going to see differences in seasonality of water, and we need to really, really prepare for that. Actually, one thing that, it would have been great to have Commissioner Sarah here because she and I have talked about how the county, in order to have more water, the county would need to slow the water down that enters our county from the wonderful sky above. But right now, the, everything we do races the water out of here as fast as we can get it, because we don't want it around either with drank houses and fields or, you know, paved streets and developments. We need to slow the water down, we need to have vegetated buffers. We can get this water to stay in Yankel County into the future in a time when we're going to have higher winter flows and lower and lower and lower summer flows. Another thing that we can do is we can actually reduce our carbon emissions. And so the solar arrays aren't really a part of that because it does mean that somewhere somebody is not, you know, emitting carbon for it. But we can do a lot of things in the county besides have industrial solar arrays. And I encourage the water commissioners and myself to get on it. So, thank you. Oh, you guys are so nice.
You can do the clap, so we're getting.
I absolutely better for my call though. I'm the next one, right?
I might get this to stop.
Oh, no, Chelsea is, you're right, somebody said that. But I like having the stage lights, so.
Hey, Kenneth Williams. Name one thing about you that would surprise voters.
I was a professional stater for 10 years, so I tell people that all the time. It's been a long time since I had been on stage and toured for the band. But I'm a professional localist, and so that's something I can do that might surprise voters. And I also have, no, that's one thing, right? But I also have two children, two boys, and they're 23 and 24. And I, sometimes people, people don't know that, they're very kind and say that I look too young for that, but I know that they're just trying to be really nice. But I have, yeah, and my boys are 10 months apart, so they're very close in age. Some people might not know that. So those are a couple things.
Well, I, I thought I'd start and say that, you know, when I was, first started college, I wanted, wanted to go into oceanography because I wanted to live underwater, but that's not very interesting. The other part is, I'm actually, I'm a grandpa, so I have six kids. Yeah, most, most people are like, what? Can you say that? So, yeah, as a subscriber, I became a grandpa. Our oldest is 23 years old, but I have six kids ranging from two and a half up to 23 years old, so definitely a change when you call the grandfather, so.
Now that I know that, that's what I'm going to call you.
I actually don't have a 23-year-old. My oldest is eight. And this will be a short answer, and maybe it won't surprise you, but I am almost a lifelong surfer, so. Besides being left-handed, it's pretty much my only, like, parlor trick is that I could talk to you forever in surfer lingo if one of you is looking for somebody here to connect to over this. Okay, well, maybe if you're left-handed. All right? Because somehow that's special for us, right? I don't know why, it's so special to me, but you understand. I shouldn't say that.
More than half minutes, if you want to take it. I think you'd be very surprised at my dedication to provide medical coverage to everybody. It's no fun when you get hurt and you don't have anybody to take care of. You're helpless. You don't have any medical insurance, or what insurance you do have puts you so far in debt that you lose your home and everything else. Now, the county, because of its buying power, can, and you can think about this, this is just a thought, can look at buying, working with the county doctor, the health people, to have low-cost prescriptions, prescription medications for starters, and how to insure more people without causing pro- more people without causing property taxes to go up. In other words, what revenues are available? Either community-developed block rats, remember the obligations? But to alleviate suffering, and it's not because I've invested interest not to suffer. It's just that I guarantee you, most of it used to be twelve years old, and you were invincible then, but around sixteen to eighteen, it started to hurt. And when we see the unfortunate populations throughout our nation, which in my opinion is the failure of a managed depression, these folks are just, they're decomposing before our very eyes. And that should not be permitted to exist. Thank you.
One last question that we'll take. Kennedy Williams. Would you support drafting, establishing, and enforcing a rent and lease control program targeted at stabilizing residential homes and small businesses in order to stabilize the county's economy and nurture small businesses and residential neighborhoods?
Yes. Reason being is, I see it on a day-to-day basis. A lot of the families that I do work with, what we start to run into over the last year is rent increases that seem to all happen all at once in all the areas. You know, we're talking about families, single parents, that are working hard and we're telling them, okay, work hard. Go get a job. Do something better for yourself. And then they're in housing that is non-monetary controlled. And any significant amount of increase in rent, all of a sudden shifts that from, for those families. I saw one family, that seventy-five dollar increase by the apartment complex she was renting, basically put her and her kids out on the street. They lost housing. And this happens, is starting to happen in some areas every six months, every year, and is consistent, sometimes by companies that are not located within our county. And that starts to change things. How do we allow families to continue to thrive? We can start to increase that economic development, provide family-based jobs. But if the cost of living here, just to rent a house or rent an apartment, because the average cost in Yampah County right now for a renter is nine hundred and twenty dollars a month. Okay? Thirty percent of the population right now makes thirty-five thousand dollars or less. Okay? Of those renters, over thirty percent or more are paying almost fifty percent of their wages are going towards just housing alone. Now, how are we supposed to help families survive if we can't somehow come up with a plan? We can do this building and talk about developing housing. But if we can't slow down right now the increases that continue to happen, we're not going to have enough people in this area to need to worry about that at some point. Because they're going other places, to one where the living's cheaper and they can earn the same wages and be able to afford to live and make at least some kind of significant difference for the future for their lives. You know, I can only imagine what those jobs are doing and what's happening. That housing, we can't even bring in big companies to take a look at, because we don't have adequate housing for the employees that they're needing. So by putting some kind of policies and controls in place, I think, to manage that, and again, it's a process. It's not going to happen overnight, but they can't continue to happen. Because we're starting to see it. I mean, you look at Portland, they're already having to start looking at it, where, you know, I heard a story about an old lady who lived there for twenty years and was basically booted out of her apartment because they could increase it by, I don't know, eight hundred dollars.
So my understanding at least about rent control laws in Oregon is that the state has preempted counties and cities from doing their own changes. Is that accurate? What do you think? Maybe? Okay. Yeah, okay. So this is something we would have to work with the state on. But I'd really to work with the state on this. I'm very comfortable with that. But I'd like to also focus on Yampah County, because if we can continue to raise our wages, like county employees, pretty much across the board, department heads tell me that they want their county employees to make more money. So there's, you know, both sides of it, is that I think we also need to put some attention into making sure that people, ensuring that people in Yampah County are also making a fair wage. But yes, I think Josh is right, that both of those seem to be out of balance right now. David?
The only way government can control housing costs, well, there's two ways. One, government can decide to buy property and build structures. A lot of the folks with gray hairs, you've heard of the government projects, and they're a nightmare in themselves. So the next thing the government can do is to have a variety of strategies to basically control the economy of rents. Now, I'm not a communist or a socialist. I believe in the fair market. And what we see here in Yampah County is no different from any jurisdiction in Portland Metro. You've got Clackamas, you've got Marion, all of these counties, the cost of land is skyrocketing, which means housing's going to skyrocket. And if you don't have the ability to purchase or live in a place, then it turns into government has to subsidize your environment, your ability to stay there. Now, we'll look at in your ballot, at our ballot pass, there's an issue down there in Willamette. Okay, I believe this deals with an ambulance service in relation to their contributions to Grand Ron and the Consolidated Indian Tribes. Now, in the ballot statement, they don't even know how much this is going to increase property taxes. They say at least it's going to be greater than three percent. Then you add this visiting tax structure that Oregon has, with an automatic three percent increase on property taxes, the people in Willamette who are very, very poor to begin. Now we're looking at six percent minimum hike in property taxes. And if you're a renter, these are pass-through costs. And I don't support these pass-through costs of property taxes. Capital improvement issues with property is also another bone of contention for me, where renters of real property end up rebuilding the landlord's or the owner of the real property's property for greater things on their own back, and they don't see any in the profit. Now, therein lies the bailiwick and their sticky record on how you create a legitimate rent control structure that basically preserves different sectors of the community, such as the economic or the business sectors that we previously mentioned, and of course, falling down to those of us that are unfortunate to be blessed with a lot of money, that you're on fixed income. If you're on social security, it's really the death knell if you don't have some form of government structured rent control. Because the way these properties are going, they're only going to increase. They're not going to decrease unless, God forbid, there's some type of catastrophic event, such as a war or something, you know, like the Spanish Flu. This is going to happen throughout Yampah County. Then it's happening in Cook County. And it's going, it's not going to stop. As the economies of Oregon grows and the nation grows, housing, the wages are not keeping pace. But then again, you have to ask yourself about personal responsibility and your own personal responsibility to have a service or some type of gift to the community that allows you to be able to afford to live. Oregon, should I have that? Thank you.
I think I talked too much. So I will just, there's been a lot about for you. So what I'm saying is that I do know that Oregon has, the laws are not in favor of rent control. So it would be, like Casey said, working with the state, and that is going to be a big job. So I don't think it's something that's going to happen anytime soon, though I would be open to having a conversation. One of the things that I think I can add here is taking a look at the things, the other factors that may be contributing to raising the rents in our county. And one of the things that I've discovered that are raising the rents here are the proliferation of vacation rentals. And we live in a community that has a beautiful wine country, and it's become a hospitality and tourism mecca. And because of that, we have had a lot of vacation rentals pop up, and a lot of people that you might know and do yourself have an Airbnb or Prpo. MIT did a study in November of last year that took a look at what happens to the rents of areas that have a proliferation of vacation rentals. And what they discovered is, is that that raises the rent for everyone else. So the more vacation rentals you have, the cost is borne on the backs of the people who live there. So one of the ways that we can mitigate that, because we are experiencing this crunch, that then on top of that, we have this issue of vacation rentals, we need to make sure that each city has very strict policy and guidelines around vacation rentals. And that looks like limiting the number of vacation rentals by percentage. It looks like requiring those that are going to be operating vacation rentals, that they are turned so as a business, and that means that they have insurance. Because in July, the standard for me is pass a law that any one of our cities with more than twenty-five hundred people is allowed to now create what they call an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit. And that was an effort to tackle this affordable housing issue. But the problem in our county is, is that those are going to be used for vacation rentals. We're probably not going to see a lot of those that are going to turn into affordable housing solutions. So for myself as commissioner, I really want to make sure that each one of our municipalities has this shored up, so it doesn't contribute to the problem. We do want to have people come and use our area and spend money here, go to restaurants and migraines, but we don't want it to cause the people who live here a rising rent.
All right, so lots of questions. Michelle will take more if anybody has more. It's just a couple of minutes before eight. We do have the facility until eight-thirty. I'd like to give everybody about three minutes-ish for closing statements. So there's four minutes each for a closing statement, that'd be sixteen minutes, so.
I'm good for a shorter one, since I'm like.
You still like Kermit the Frog.
You can pay your time if you want.
I was just, I'm going to pretend like this isn't, I was just thinking that we could make it shorter by me not speaking as long. Because twenty minutes seems like a long time.
Yeah.
Who wants four minutes, raise your hand. Who wants three minutes?
I have just two.
Two tries.
Two minutes?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. So two minutes, time's worth people, that's eight minutes, passing the thing. Five-minute timeout break? Everybody's good with that? Five-minute timeout break, let's come back in about three minutes after eight and get going. Few more questions, and then we'll have time for the closing statements.
Okay, so there we have it. They're going to take a five-minute break, a rest break, we'll call it on the radio. And we'll play some music and then come back for the closing statements. If you want to watch this, you can watch it on our Facebook page, KLYC Radio, and our website, klyc.us. This is KLYC McMinnville, Newburgh. It's seven fifty-seven. We are not going to be starting when radio was. We'll be starting that program at the conclusion of this candidate's forum that's coming to you live from the Shalem Cultural Center here in Newburgh. We apologize for the acoustics. We were not able to tie directly into the sound system here at the Shalem Cultural Center, so we're trying to equalize it to the best we can, so you can understand what's being said. But it's very important that you know what the candidates are saying. These are people that you're going to be electing to represent your county, and you need to know what their positions are on the issues. This is KLYC McMinnville, Newburgh. This is Jim Croce and Bad Bad Leroy Brown.
Did want to mention, there is bottled water, there are cookies on the back table, please gather yourself of those, I don't want to take them home. And there's also an information table there for the candidates, so feel free to gather yourself of those materials as well. Thank you for coming. I appreciate it. My moderator is requesting an eight-point forward. So I think we'll stick with three-minute answer. Too many answers, sorry, too many answers. Our media coordinator, everybody can go. And I also wanted to give my opinion before Mr. Barry Allen, the graphic is here, thank you for coming, sir, appreciate it. The local coverage is always important. What will you do to ensure the stepping up initiative which was signed last year and other commitments are actually followed up on?
Oh my gosh, I must confess, I have no idea what the stepping up commitment is. But you, you, can you tell me what it is?
It is a commitment on the part of the county commissioners to create programs and work with our leaders to create programs that keep people who have primary mental and primary addiction issues out of the criminal justice system. And nothing's been done, it was signed almost a year ago.
Well, hopefully, so her question, or her explanation was that this is a commitment that the county board of commissioners has made to working with folks who are primary mentally, mental health.
Or addiction.
Or addiction.
To keep them out of the criminal justice system. It's a nationwide initiative.
I fully support that, so I presume, I'm guessing that there are probably steps to implement it, and I would love to do that. No, no steps to implement it, but do we, do we have a plan?
Nothing's been done.
Nothing's been done. Well, I always say that farmers get things done, so I, and I go to you for questions that I've answered all the time, so I'll just go to you and we'll talk about it. But we need to actually have a plan before, you know, we can move forward, right? But it sounds like it's a goal, right? Is that, would that be accurate? And that we need to, you know, have a plan to get to that goal. But I would love to work with you on that. But I know I'll look it up.
Such programs that you have mentioned are very important for a variety of reasons. One, you can't build it up prisons. Now, to answer your question specifically, I support the reinvention of the DPPA and the CCC. And if you're addicted to something, there's nothing like being outside, working off your addiction, and doing something for the nation or for your community. And I think it's long past time that the Works Project Administration and the Civilian Conservation Corps be brought back to address certain aspects of the problem that you mentioned. The mentally ill portion is very problematic due to a variety of ancillary issues that are hard to predict, hard to fund, and I certainly don't have the answers for them. I do know that we have a lot of people in school that have a lot of student debt, primarily physicians, dentists, lawyers. And then, of course, everybody else that goes to college, chemists, mathematicians, artists. And utilizing those folks in this process to pay down or pay off their student loans, to look after and basically supervise these work projects, is something that should be considered. This project of stepping up is a transformational issue for the nation, and I'm not surprised that not much has been done here in this county, primarily because we're a county of very limited resources. And once it gets out on the street, then you have a lot of benefits that are going to be given. You're going to have a tremendous influx of people that want and need those benefits, and yet the county can't afford it. Now, for example, pet stuff.
So before I came here, my husband came home from lunch, he works for Yampel County Mental Health, and he is a peer support specialist, and he said, "I kept someone out of jail today because he went with them and advocated for them, and they have mental health issues and addiction issues oftentimes they go hand in hand." So my husband's been a social worker for the entire time that I've known him, we've been married eleven years, and this is his life's work, and he's very, very good at it. And I am actually very happy to see some of the initiatives that Yampel County has done when it comes to mental health, but obviously you can always do more. And I am grateful to know that the commissioners made that commitment, but I'm also in alignment with Casey in the fact that it's one thing to make a commitment, and another thing to create a plan that's assessable, that you can assess how well you're doing and meeting those goals, right? So as a teacher, a lot of what I do is assess, where are my students? How well are they doing? Are they meeting the objectives? And so as county commissioner, regards to this, something's near and dear to my own heart, I would definitely participate in that. I also think it's important that we take a look at who we're electing for judges. When it comes to keeping people out of jail, it's the judges that we have in our county and the decisions they make around these folks that make a huge difference. So we want to eliminate mass incarceration at the local level. It comes down to who are we electing for judges? Are they socially conscious? Are they aware? Or to make look at addiction and mental health issues as something to incarcerate. So I urge you to take a look at your ballot and really think about that, because that is a key component to making sure that we can make, route these folks to the services they need, and that is not jail.
So I heard this one at the judges forum, so I'm glad you brought it up again. And not that I, you know, working for the county in a program that's supposed to be preventative to keep kids, at least youth, from being adjudicated and going into OIA into basically the juvenile prison system, and keeping them out of residential placements that would be hospitalizations and things, it's very disappointing, the fact that that initiative was actually agreed upon, and we've heard nothing about it as county employees, especially since my job is to do that sort of work, working with law enforcement, and knowing that if that was an agreement, you would think there would be funds going into that. And it's not happening. And I can tell you, a lot of the kids before they put wraparound into focusing solely on juvenile justice and juvenile kids that were going in there, when, once RAP started working together with them to do those preventative programs, we found that eighty to eighty-five percent of the kids that were being locked up had not received services before for any kind of childhood trauma, or drug abuse, or anything else. They were just locked up because they were looked at as bad kids. The cost to taxpayers is exponential compared to the work that we can do. And even though there are, even February 2017, an assessment done on our county services said that we need to be focusing on preventative programs. And a lot of the answers that came at that last forum talked about the programs that were there, but I can tell you, and not to be negative or to take shots, but they're pretty weak. And those, if you're involved in those systems, are involved in those programs, are supporting those, when it comes to mental health, there's stigma that goes with it. There's also not enough focus either on the opioid crisis. You don't hear them talking about it. They, there's no focus on it. How much time do I have? Five seconds.
Thank you.
Louder.
Make it more fun.
Well, you might have to double-click on it and just close the app and then open it back up.
I need to quit touching it.
Senator Walz, what do you feel are the advantages and disadvantages to having a five-member county commission?
Be careful before what you ask for. My opinion, three commissioners have already screwed up this county pretty bad. If you double it, well, you know, you're rolling with dice. However, the more representation you get, that's our democracy, and we get better, better place to live, we get more input, more people participating. Let's look at it for just, you know, just a few questions. First of all, are these five commissioners going to be at large? Or are you going to, because you're voters, first of all, we have to change the county charter, that's a whole nother mess, to accommodate this change. Or, so are the five going to be at large, or are they gonna, or are you gonna carve up the county into five districts? Now, when you start doing this, you think growth is unbridled now, it will become exponential because you have now five competing entities to give direction for policy and dispersion of monies. And therefore, the people running for office, sure, anybody out here, anybody here could run for office, but with the state of Oregon's Secretary of State programs with funding for, basically unlimited funding for campaigns, and I don't still understand how they give tax write-offs to people that donate to campaigns, because you have several families that have family businesses who contribute to, their businesses contribute to a candidate, they contribute to a candidate, and you get like two, four, three per tax write-offs, especially when it comes to this in-kind contribution, because you could say, hey, my contribution is in-kind, it's worth fifty thousand bucks, and in reality, it's only a nickel. So be careful.
Okay. All right. So I am a thinker of this, however, I do understand that there might be some mitigating factors that we need to take a look at in terms of, do we split the county up, do we do at-large, as Mr. Walz says, but on its surface, I think that the makeup of the county itself, the needs, with half of our county being rural and half of those living within the city centers, I believe that there's some needs, as Casey so openly put in the early part of this forum, that are experienced by those who live rural and that are not experienced by those who live in city. So I think that a five-member board would be a great way to represent all of those people within our county in this very diverse county that we have. But the number one reason I believe that this would be an important thing is the distribution of power. Now, of course, you can always have argument whether you have three, or five, or seven, there's always going to be disagreement. However, I think that when you have five, you distribute the power a little bit more evenly, and it is less confrontational now. It doesn't mean that it won't be some confrontation because each person is a leading individual. So, but ultimately, I think that for our county's future, five makes sense.
I would, I would be in favor of this, just seeing the under-representation throughout the county. I think that you would see a more vested interest and somebody who's looking out for those specific areas that we broke them up in the districts, not just, you know, people voting on, you know, the big signs or how many signs are in those areas, but people that actually understand those communities, will bring the best interests of those communities forward and, and represent what Yampel County is, is as a whole. And, you know, right now, it's people that are living, that are representing, that are living in a smaller area, representing just those areas, to really get to know those outside communities and those concerns, and hear the actual issues that are going on in those areas. I think oftentimes you have to represent and be from those areas, because the only things that you see that are really dealt with on a large scale are those things that are printed, or that become, end up becoming big issues, like Dundee is known for the bypass. So I think for me, splitting it up, I, in five ways, I think is the only way we're going to get representation throughout the whole county. It's kind of like, it's like kind of like, let's see, all right, four, four commissioners that are voted by district, maybe twenty-five thousand people per district, with one at large, because then you get all these different voices, and then one person who can kind of herd the cats, as it were. But the great thing about the system that we have right now in Yampel County is that though we're not a charter county, we're like a general law county, we actually can, through ordinance, affect change and go to a five-member board of commissioners. It's one of the few things we can do with what would be called the charter of Yampel County. So if you want to help me in the fall, the plan is to submit three thousand signatures and have our approved ballot by August eighth, but I need three thousand signatures, and we can change it to a board of commissioners of five this year in the general election. So district representation is obviously a great thing, but we also get, as Chelsea noted, we also get more voices and we get different experiences. And it's not that I better represent Dayton than somebody else, it's just I, I know who to go to, I know who to listen to, both the voices of powerful and the voices of powerless. Whoa, what's my other note here? But a very conservative person told me recently that it's time for a five-member board of commissioners, because the decisions that Yampel County commissioners are making are so big, and they affect so many people, and I really appreciated that. Yeah, and then I just want to put a plug in for the Newburgh graphic. The Newburgh graphic told me, we believe Kula would be better represent every day of residents of Yampel County, and so I just wanted to put out a plug for their endorsement. So, thank you. But five members.